Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go. Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. And at this time, if you would, please stand for the invocation that will be given by Councilman Curtis Edmonds, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds.
May we pray. Gracious and eternal God, our Father, we are so grateful for the portion of life and strength that you have given us, the ability to reason, the ability to see beyond the faults of people, and the attitude that we have to make this city the greatest that we know. We know we have our faults, God, but we've tried to come together to reason, to work it out, and do the best that's for everyone. Bless us all here, those that see things from different venues. Let us, Lord, be able to express our concerns, but not come down on people in their character. Help us, Lord, to dialogue, meaningful dialogue, that it will help our city be the best. As these, my colleagues, that sit here, and those in the audience, come together to articulate and share one with another, that, God, you will guide us, that we will make right choices and say right things. That your Spirit fall fresh in this place. For it's in Jesus' name we pray and declare it. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of City Council, please indicate your presence electronically.
Seven members of City Council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration minutes of a call meeting of May 21st, 2012, a call meeting of May 22nd, 2012, and a regular meeting of May 22nd, 2012. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move of adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remark at that time. Public hearing, 12-239, Public Hearing on Use Permit and Comprehensive Plan Applications. Item A, UP 1206, Elm Avenue Corridor. Wheelbrader Portsmouth, Inc., is requesting a use permit to install a 32-square-foot freestanding business sign at 3801 Elm Avenue. The property is owned IN Industrial, where a use permit is required for freestanding signs. The Comprehensive Plan's future land use map calls for the area to be developed with heavy industrial. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of City Council. My name is Jonathan Hartley, Planning Administrator in the City Planning Department. The applicant, Mr. Clendenon, with Wheelbrader Portsmouth, Inc., is requesting a use permit to install a 32-square-foot freestanding business sign at the intersection of Elm Avenue and Victory Boulevard to advertise and identify Wheelbrader Portsmouth Incorporated. The property is located in the industrial IN District just south of the naval shipyard, which is in the yellow. The surrounding area is dominated by heavy industrial uses and vacant industrially-zoned land, which is the purple on the map on the right. Wheelbrader, Inc. is a waste-to-energy steam power plant that was originally owned by Southeastern Public Service Authority, or SIPSA. The facility was sold by SIPSA in May of 2010 to Wheelbrader Portsmouth Incorporated. They provide steam power to the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, as well as generate electricity from burning municipal solid waste. As you can see in this picture, they have a temporary banner, which is presently hanging on the fence of the property, but this location is partially shielded by bushes at the corner. They now wish to install a permanent sign in front of the bushes to be more visible from both Victory Boulevard and Elm Avenue. While they would be allowed a freestanding sign of as large as 125 square feet and as tall as 26 feet, they are requesting a sign of only one-quarter of the permitted size. The location of the sign will have to meet the setback of seven feet and comply with the site triangle requirements for the intersection of Elm and Victory. The approach to the new South Norfolk-Jordan Bridge will traverse this area of the city, but does not impact or alter the area where the sign is proposed. And the corridor in relationship to the sign is the blue band, whereas the sign is the yellow star. The Planning Commission, at their meeting on May 1st, 2012, recommended approval with the conditions listed in your staff report by a vote of four to nothing. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 12-06. At this time, if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 12-06. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved seven zero. Item B, CPA 12-01, citywide. The City of Portsmouth requests an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is to consider a new master plans for parks, recreation, and leisure services. Vision principle: change and new direction. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of Council. I just wanted to take a few minutes before the public hearing to brief you on the development of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, as it has evolved from the beginning approximately a year ago to where it is tonight, which is ready for the first reading and ultimately, and hopefully, for adoption at your next meeting. As I mentioned a little over a year ago, City Council initiated the master plan process, and it initiated that by forming a master plan steering committee comprised of General Short, Brian Mills, and Curtis Gunn, to guide us through the Destination Portsmouth process. And there was a staff team comprised of planning, parks and rec, and school staff to do the research, the survey logistics, to provide inventory information, to facilitate meetings, in essence, to do the legwork and to provide as much of the working knowledge of the system for the consultants. And that team is made up of Paul Holt, Jocelyn Adamois, Fred Brusso, and Jonathan Hartley from the Planning Department, myself, Margaret Thorne, Meg Pittenger, and Valora Bascavir from the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services, and Sharon Moore from the schools. In the first phase, consistent with the Destination Portsmouth model, we identified the challenges, and we did this by inventorying the existing system of parks and recreation assets and developing a questionnaire to survey citizens' knowledge of the available assets, to determine their preferences in terms of activities and facility uses, and to obtain feedback on the greatest needs with regards to parks, recreation, parks and recreation facilities, and programming. The survey was available at several locations in a hard copy format, and it was also available online. And one of the earlier stages of the challenges development was also convening stakeholder groups to get their specific interest and feedback with the needs for facilities and programming. And so those stakeholder groups included the Athletic League Presidents and Officers, the Civic Leagues, and the relevant appointed bodies, such as the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission. And so we took this feedback from the survey and from these stakeholder groups and created a draft statement of mission and values, and then took these statements, along with the survey data, back to the citizens in the form of citizen forums in September and October of last year to get further feedback. In essence, we were asking, do we get it right, and are we on the right track? And that wrapped up the challenges phase. The next phase was the solutions phase, in which the master plan team and the consultants drafted an outline of possible recommendations to focus on the plan. We took the mission and values and drafted recommendations back to citizens in a series of open houses in February to further gather feedback. And then we posted this draft information on the web, as we had in each stage of the process, to continue to get online suggestions and feedback through the Internet. And then that gave us the substance for the draft master plan, which we got an initial look at back in March, and also posted that on the website. And then the consultants and staff continued to refine it based on citizen feedback until we have the final draft, which is before you tonight. The Parks and Rec Commission reviewed the final draft, and they approved it at their meeting on April 25th. The Planning Commission had a public hearing and discussions at its April and May meetings, and ultimately approved it at their meeting on May the 1st. And then finally, the Master Plan Steering Committee reviewed it for the last time at their meeting on May 11th. So just quickly, to recap and to illustrate, we incorporated citizen input throughout the process, evolving it from draft, mission, vision, and values, to specific recommendations and action items for implementation. And we did that under the Destination Portsmouth process, as you are familiar with this process that takes it from the initial kickoff through challenges, determining what are the challenges, the issues and opportunities, and then solutions, and then ultimately developing the plan, and at each stage with public input through direct feedback and through forums and focus And so the mission, vision, and values were the basis for coming up with the specific recommendations that Doug Cole is going to brief you on in just a minute. And those recommendations fell into the following five categories: communication, maintenance, recreation programs, community facilities, and additional land. The mission statement is part of the plan, and I won't read it for you, but that's been posted since its initial draft. And these are our values, the basis on which we developed the recommendations: community improvement, quality of life for each citizen, lasting design, safety, high standard of maintenance, and sharing of resources. So now I'd like to introduce Doug Cole, our consultant with Design Forum, to briefly cover some of the action items that are in each of the five areas of recommendation.
Good evening. My name is Doug Cole, with Site Design, actually, a new name is Site Design, and with me is Susan Reed from Commonwealth Architects. We're happy to be a part of this process, to have your first Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And what we've done is broken this out into five different study areas. So the first area is communication, and what we said here is we are really developing marketing campaigns, so your residents and visitors know exactly what you have, because you really have some nice things here. And in that marketing campaign, market the benefits and advantages for parks and recreation. I'm gonna skip number three for a second, but, and as you do a marketing campaign, Portsmouth has a really unique park system, the City Park and Hoffler Creek and some other parks. So really create a brand, because your brand is different than the rest of the cities in this area. And communication, the website now, which is where most people get their information, so keep and make sure your website is up to date, and then enhance in volunteer efforts to bring advocacy to help support operational cost. So that's our communication area. The second area was maintenance, and the first thing we said was to establish a maintenance benchmark. The National Parks and Recreation Association has a benchmark for different types of parks, and we said that's where you should start to judge your maintenance level of parks. But also develop a process to measure customer satisfaction, so make sure the residents are happy, and if they're not, or if they are, they have a way to express themselves. Ensure support items are available to the public, and this is just as simple sometimes as adding a trash can to a park. If this trash can is not there, they're gonna throw trash in the ground. So just make sure that there's support items are there. Also ensure that the appropriate equipment is available to staff. So if they don't have the equipment, they can't maintain the parks to the standards that you're expecting. And again, develop a volunteer maintenance group for the park system. The third area is community facilities. This one is, the first one is upgrade existing park and facility uses to attract more users. This is where we actually developed a program of uses, things that Portsmouth needs as far as parks and rec, and then gave possible locations where each of those should be. New parks should be multipurpose, and existing single-use parks should be upgraded for multiple uses. Upgrade existing parks to create a strong image of public spaces in the city, and this really just means if you have equipment or sidewalks, anything that's not, you know, up to par, to either remove it or replace it. And then upgrade existing recreational facilities. These are the actual structures themselves, and Susan did an extensive study on what each structure was and what needed to be done to upgrade it. The fourth area is recreation programs. Some of these sort of coincide with the communication area, but improve awareness for programs for preteens, teens, adults, seniors, and families. Provide a balance of program offerings across the city, so things aren't isolated, they're just spread across the city. Improve security or the perception of security at all the facilities. Evaluate the program of service performance, just like your maintenance should be evaluated, so should your programs and the people performing the programs. Provide continuing education for the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services as our society is changing. We just need continuing education for staff, so they are up to date with the changes. Provide more nature-focused programs, more active adult senior fitness programs, and develop more youth program, youth development programs. So youth is most at risk, especially in today's world, so develop more youth. Expand your historic and environmental-related educational programs, and diversify the scale of special events. And this means that you don't actually have to do it, but it just assists neighborhood groups, citywide events, or even regional events. And then promote the coordination of programs between Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services and continuing education programs. And then the fifth area is additional parkland. The first one is some parts of the city are underserved, so this says focused parkland acquisition in underserved areas, anywhere from pocket parks up to community parks. There should be a balance of open space and park types. One of the things we noticed that people in Portsmouth like their pocket parks just as much as they do their regional parks, or their big parks, so trying to divide a balance as you grow. Park trails and greenways for transportation, fitness, and recreation, so parks and park trails and greenways, not just recreation, but this kind of overlaps with the transportation study that was done just a couple of years ago. Reconnected residents with the waterfront, again, this kind of overlaps with the master plan that was done recently. And even though this is not additional parkland, sometimes the fifth one is implement a system-wide directional signage program. So sometimes if you just have signs, make people aware of what's out there, you may not have to build additional parks. And even though you already have in your zone and you have certain requirements for the allocation of park and open space and planning, new projects and developments, we did an extensive analysis in the study, and we just said maybe it should be perhaps upgraded and made a little more strict than what it is today. So those are the five areas of study that we recommended in the master plan, of which, of course, in the book, they're much more detailed than the way I described here.
That concludes our summary presentation prior to the public hearing.
Vice Mayor Whitehurst.
Thank you. Does the inventory that you took, does it include the land that may be owned by the school division and PRJA?
The inventory of park facilities were those that are owned by the city and controlled by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services.
I thought we were trying to use the facilities that are located throughout the city. I know that Tyrone Heinz, if you know Tyrone Heinz, he's a person that loves children and finds ways to keep them busy. He has requested the use of a facility that we say belongs to the school division, actually belongs to the city, and I believe four members of council agreed that we ought to mark a field for him, and I understand, talking to you, we're not gonna do that. My concern is, we're looking at trying to use facilities throughout the city while we're excluding the school division.
As a matter of fact, the master plan, which is the focus of the public hearing, does have a significant portion dedicated to a recommendation that the relationship with the school with regard to joint use of facilities be enhanced. And so the master plan does address the need to be able to use more school facilities for open recreation activities.
Here's our first test. We ought to be able to mark the field that Mr. Heinz wants to use to put some children on this weekend and keep them busy.
Okay. Councilman Sherr.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments would be the same as it was when we heard this the first time. I think our next step is, we had a good committee, they did a great job, but we need to put some dollars to the facility upgrades and the parks improvement, et cetera, because it's just a plan until we put some dollars beside it, and so I think that's the next step. We need to have someone, staff, et cetera, to come back to us and tell us what it would cost us to implement.
Now, Deputy Godfrey, the plan here is not an action plan, is a comprehensive overall view of our recreational system and where we might want to go in the future. Is that right? This has absolutely nothing to do with action. These are potential things that you could look at to be able to implement into action. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct, and we didn't put dollar amounts to each of the action items in there, and as Mr. Cole alluded to, each of the five areas, and then within those five areas, there were five or six recommendations. There are specific action items numbering five or six for each of one of those recommendations. So there's a very detailed list of objectives in there. With regard to funding those recommendations, particularly with regard to capital items, this plan gives us a good basis in the future as we program items into the CIP. It gives us a good basis for prioritizing the recreation capital improvements that are needed. So it's sort of a framework from which you go back through your budget process and through your CIP, and specifically appropriate dollars to implement those action items.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my colleague, Councilman Sherry, that we need to look at the maintenance and the upkeep, the facilities that we currently have. Thanks to the sheriff, he's helped restore and rebuild, in some cases, some of our existing facilities. So we need to make it a priority. My concern with all these studies, and they always give us a warm, fuzzy feeling, and since my time on council, I guarantee you, you could fill this room up with studies that we've commissioned, and probably if you invited the consultants that were behind them, you wouldn't be able to get everybody in this room. So like I always say, sounds good, looks good, where are we gonna go with it? And I don't want it to be another report that's put on a shelf gathering dust, like way too many have. So the key will be, what's the next step? So I'm gonna ask that question. What's the next step? What do you expect from this council as far as going forward with this?
Mr. Godfrey, you want to take a stab at that? In terms of next steps?
As I said, it is a basis for, implementation is the next step. And some of these are items that we can do with existing staff and with existing funds. Some of them take longer, a longer timetable to implement and take dollars that will need to be appropriated in future operating budgets, and some of them will take considerably more dollars that will need to be appropriated and organized in the capital improvement program because there are large capital needs. So it is intended to be an operating guide for, to be implemented as we go forward.
Mr. Whitehurst.
This is such a small item. I'm saying that the reason I'm told that we're not marking the field is because it belongs to the school division. And that, to me, is counter to what we're trying to do. We're trying to use any field that is anywhere in the city that serves a recreational need. The school, or it's PRJA, we try to use it because we don't have any more land. Mr. Heinz is having functions this weekend, and I believe four members of council said do it. If necessary, I'll make a motion, and I'm not making it right now, to take $300 from the $5 million surplus we have, to do it.
Ms. Randall.
Yes. One of the things that I was very much concerned about was, this conversation came up sometime in the past, in terms of utilizing schools, recreational areas, along with the city's recreational areas, to ensure that we could take care of the needs of our citizens and our children in the city. And at that time, when that plan was put into place, that is when many of the communities began to upgrade their recreational areas in the communities. If you ride around, you can look at what has been done on many of the open areas in our cities. And it seems if somewhere in those areas, we can coordinate things where all of these services can be met to meet the needs of our youth. If you ride out in many of our community in the open areas, it's a matter of working cooperatively together and making sure we maximize the uses that we have on our land. Think about Cali, I mean, I look at Trucksmore, I look at over in the Crowder areas. Somewhere, there is space out there that we can use together cooperatively between everybody who's trying to promote programs for children. Every time something comes up, we cannot put a little area over here and a little area over there. I'm just using common sense, or what they call old folks sense, and utilize it in a way where everybody can benefit from it. And as I was running around the community, there's a lot of open space that communities and civic leagues have all worked to open up our children. I think it's a matter of us just talking with one another and coordinating when those programs are going to be, even on the school grounds. So that would be my recommendation, that we look at if the space is there, let's make sure we use it so that everybody can benefit from it. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. At this time, we're in the process of a public hearing on item CPA 12-01, and at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item CPA 12-01. Members of Council, this public hearing is closed. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
You hit the wrong book. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'm going to vote against this motion, unfortunately, because I think the first test, it's flawed. We're not using all the land that's available to us for recreational purposes. We don't have land available where we can expand. I think if there's a site someplace where the land belongs to the city, we ought to be able to use it and have cooperative agreement with them. It just doesn't make any sense to me, so I'm gonna vote no. It just doesn't make any sense to me, so I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Thank you. Let's all vote. All right, Madam Clerk?
This item is approved 6-1.
Very good.
City manager's report 12-240, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $40,118 from the Institute of Museum and Library Services for a conservation project support grant for the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard Museum. Vision principle, pride of past. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 12-241, item A, adoption of a resolution electing the alternate rate of 8.27% as the City of Portsmouth, Virginia Retirement System contribution rate for the biennial budget effective July 1st, 2012. Vision principle, change and new directions. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Mr. Mark Adalde Giotrofsky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow citizens.
Good evening, sir.
It occurred to me today that there is a glaring deficiency in City Hall. There's no shoe shine stand here. And you may wonder how that's relevant to this topic. It's because y'all are scuffing your shoes by kicking cans down the road. And the thing about aluminum cans, in contrast to steel clad cans, eventually they flatten out and they're not going to go any farther. So, relative to this particular item, this is another can being kicked. The city has a choice. The Commonwealth gave each locality an option of going with a higher rate of contribution or a lower rate. Your own financial analysis says that this is the consequence of going with a lower rate. It will allow for a saving of 30% in terms of the city's contribution in the current fiscal year and the one to follow, but it will reduce the contributions to Portsmouth's employer account and the investment earnings they would have generated, which means there will be fewer assets available for benefits. It will result in a lower funded ratio when the next actuarial valuation is performed, and thus, a higher calculated contribution rate at that time. And it will require that the city include the net pension obligation under GASP, the Government Accounting Standards Board standards, in the notes to the financial statements. So, yes, you get a benefit, you get a 30% immediate savings, but it's going to cost us in the long term. Combined with the city's funding deficiencies for our own supplemental retirement plans, both the regular plan and the police and fire plan, we're just pushing it off, pushing it off, and it's going to come back to bite us. But, you know, that's why you're paid to make the tough decisions. Whenever there's a tough decision to be made, always go for the easy answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Members of council, we have no additional speakers on this item. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Pardon?
This item is adopted 7-0. Item B, adoption of a resolution certifying that City of Portsmouth employees who are Virginia Retirement System members are required to contribute 5% of their credible compensation beginning on July 1st, 2012. Vision principle, change and new directions. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Pardon?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. New business 12-242, boards and commissions. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of council, the Personnel Committee would like to offer the following nominations for our boards and commissions. Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Reverend Milton Blunt. Board of Building Code Appeals, Brandon Sharon. Community Policy Management Team, Jacqueline Scott. Anita Haley. Jennifer Pierce. Linda Philippi. Downtown Design Committee, Ian Vaughn. Historic Preservation Commission, Rusty Long. History Commission, Carol Hart. Museum and Fine Arts, Claudette Blunt. Parks and Recreation Commission, Samuel Blake and Patricia Peel. Wetlands Board, Brandon Griffin. And Newport Community Development Authority, Yolanda Thomas. At this time, I would like to call on my co-chair of the Personnel Committee, Councilman Sherry, to read the reappointments.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Reappointments, recommendations are as follows. Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Mrs. Veronique Baker. Sandra Einpress. And Sharon Moore. Community and Criminal Justice Board, Carol Cooper. Arthur Dreyer. Chief Edward Hoggess. Judge Roxy Hola. Loretta Reese. Earnhardt Spencer Jr. Sheriff William Watson. For Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, City Manager Kenneth Chandler. Mayor Kenneth Wright. For the Social Services Advisory Commission, Peter Bear and Desaline Perry. For the Sports Authority of Hampton Roads, Councilman Steve Heretic. For the Tidewater Community College Board, Lee Armstead. And that concludes the reappointments. Recommendations, gentlemen?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. These appointments are adopted 7-0.
Councilman Sherry?
Thank you, Mayor. In addition, Mayor, I'd just like to let the public know, those out in the audience and those at home of the meeting opens that we have on some other boards and commissions. At this time, we have need for a criminal defense attorney on the Community Criminal Justice Board. We have the need for a resident of the Historic District of Port Norfolk for the Historic Preservation Commission. We have one position open on the History Commission. We have a position open on the Library Board. We have two positions available on the Museum and Fire Ops Commission. We have two positions available on the Newport Development Authority. And we have three positions open on the Social Services Advisory Board, as well as one position on the Torn Advisory Board. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
12-243, items submitted by council members.
Let me, first of all, just kind of, in a brief summary, talk to you, all of us, about what this city and this region has gone through since our last council meeting. We've had two major festivals right here in Portsmouth. The Umosia Festival and just concluded our Seawall Music Festival in conjunction with Opcel. And we had record-breaking weekends in both of those events. The Umosia Festival, we had more people. Now, a lot of that probably has contributed to the weather, because it was perfect weather on both of these events. But we had more people at both of these events than, than anybody has ever seen in this city. And they were citizens here of Portsmouth and from all over Hampton Roads. We also, between those two bookends, had the Elizabeth River Run, where we had over 1,200 participants that came out that Saturday morning, and they raised over $45,000 for our children's museum. And again, these participants were from all over Hampton Roads. Again, Portsmouth and Hampton Roads being somewhat in a showcase, and to see all of those things work in unisys, and all of our city employees, police, fire, our Parks and Recreation Department, all working together, it was flawless. I don't think we had a report of any incidents. And I think at Opcel this weekend, I stopped over to our station to see if there was any major reports. Everything minor, if anything. So, it was a real great opportunity for us to show our capabilities and being able to put events on like this with the diversity within our city and the diversity within our region, and how flawless those things went, and how well the community came in and interacted. And if you weren't there, I'm sorry you missed it, but it was phenomenal. And it speaks of what our potential are as a city and as a region and the things that we're capable of doing. This Opcel in conjunction with our music festival, we had, just an example, the ferry, we had 32,000 people ride the ferry over a three-day weekend. 32,000. These are numbers that we have never seen as an HRT. And HRT did an outstanding job. We had so many people standing in, we had to bring on the carry b earlier than we had anticipated to try to move and transport those people back and forth from Portsmouth to Norfolk. The light rail over in Norfolk, for a three-day, 46,000 people rode the light rail. I mean, these are numbers that we have never seen. No one anticipated. And the Vice Mayor and I sat on the board for HRT, and I am the Chair of the Operations Commission. Friday morning at 10 o'clock, we had a last and final meeting, going over all the operations and trying to make sure that we were prepared as a city and as an HRT to be able to handle whatever had came about. And my hat's off to HRT, to our city, all of the people for working together to put on these two fabulous festivities and bringing all of these folks here together and showing just what the potential here is on this seaport city and all of the diverse. I can't say enough about our diversity and all of the different musical features. I thought we were sitting at America's Got Talent. I saw three judges out at the, one of the Derondales, three of our judges at the Derondales and the Manhattans with families, and, I mean, it was just beautiful. And it speaks to the things that we can do. Now, sandwiched between those things, we also had our Memorial Day Parade, the longest-running parade. My hat's off to Councilman Heretic, an outstanding job, sir. We had the great pleasure of hosting Admiral Harvey. And you know, when the big admiral comes, all the other admirals and everybody else comes. So, we had an overflow of seating. We had quite a few flag officers and others that were there, and it went off without a hitch. We also had, in that whole timeframe, our Farmers Market every Saturday, hosting. If you could just walk through our city over these last three weekends and see all of the activities, the festivities, and all of the people interacting, going from Farmers Market to these festivities, I mean, it was amazing. And then, lastly, last week, we had our graduation of our high schools. We had over 905 high school students graduate from Wilson, Norcom, and Churchland. Almost a third of those were honor graduates, and their scholarships totaled $10 million. These things, you know, you talk about your investment in education and what we do and how our tax dollars are spent, and there's absolutely nothing, as a mayor or a citizen, anyone, that make you prouder than to see these young people achieving and doing things and going off and to do great things. So, with that, I'm extremely proud of these last few weeks. Again, to our police chief, fire chief, Mr. Chandler, please let Mr. Chandler go. Well, Brandon, you, you actually ran the show at Opcel. You were on the ground, walking up and down the streets, making sure we had the boats docked and power and all of those great things. And it really makes you feel proud to see things go well, and as well as they did there. So, I'm tickled deaf. And anyone want to comment on any of those events? Our parade, Mr. Heretic, or anything? Anybody want to comment there before I yield the floor? All right. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. On an entirely different note, I'd like to comment on a couple of news articles that appeared recently. One was on the city center that was announced at a state of the city address a couple of years ago. It was reported by the Virginian Pilot that the mayor commented that, at least in his view, and he's entitled to his view, that that project was not considered a serious project. Well, at a public work session yesterday, the city manager reaffirmed that indeed that is a serious project for the city. Granted, it hasn't gotten anywhere yet, but the partners involved with this, Bond Sikor is one, Bob Williams who did Harborview, and Amada Hoffler, who, two of the principals, graduated from Churchland High School. I consider those three pretty serious talent and pretty serious developers. So, in this business, silence sometimes means consent. And if you don't say anything about something that you disagree with, people tend to think that you agree with it. Well, I agree that the project is a serious project, one that offers a lot of potential for the city of Portsmouth. The mayor just mentioned tax dollars that were generated from events. Well, Mayor, a project like that could generate mega dollars for the city of Portsmouth, similar to what Town Center does in Virginia Beach. So, I consider that a serious project, and I, for one, would like to see it go forward. So, hopefully it will. City manager still has hope for it, and this member of council still has hope for it as well. The other thing that appeared in the paper recently and in the news, unfortunately, was another sexual abuse case at one of our high schools. This is the fourth one in short time period. And I made a suggestion, and that is only a suggestion. The school board is their own elected body, and so, what I'm saying is a suggestion. My suggestion would be to establish a hotline that children could use, similar to what Crime Line is. So, they would have a safety net when they're in the confines of the walls of the school where kids should be safe, where they could report any inappropriate action from any member of any school administrator or member of faculty or even one of their own peers. So, hopefully, the school board will, will take that, will vet it, will hopefully implement something similar so when the school bells ring in September, our children have a mechanism where they can report this stuff. I, for one, am completely embarrassed that these things are happening. The hotline, I think, also should be used when they're on the school buses. I know that things have occurred on school buses that shouldn't occur as well. So, and I appreciate, I know some of my colleagues have responded favorably, favorably to that as well. And hopefully, the school board will have a serious conversation with it and take appropriate action. So, this fourth event is the last event in the Portsmouth school system. Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else? All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 12-244, report on pending items. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on May 22nd, 2012. There were six non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on May 22nd, 2012. One of the speakers required action by staff. The speaker brought forth concerns about the Handy Ride, which is the name of the paratransit service operated by Hampton Roads Transit. That provides service within a three-quarter mile radius of all fixed route bus routes. The speaker has one daughter who is eligible for this service. She recently moved and was no longer within the service area to have paratransit come directly to her home. Her question was related to knowing where this location would be. It was determined that the location of the Town Point Shopping Center on Twin Pines Road would be the closest point with easy accessibility. This location is 1.4 miles from the home of the citizen. From this point on, the citizen will bring her daughter to this location for pickup. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. I actually, Bernadette, called the citizen to make sure that she was happy with that resolution and she was tickled to death. So thank you for your help there, and I want to also thank HRT for extending the courtesy, listening to her, and being able to come to some conclusions. So thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 12-245, non-agenda speakers, and our first speaker is Mr. Steve Hagwood. He's followed by Mr. Maury Cook.
Mayor Wright?
Sir.
Vice Mayor Whitehurst, city council members, good evening. My name is Steve Hagwood. I am the Executive Director for the Center for Community Development located here in Portsmouth, Virginia. As you may know, CCDI is a 501(c)(3) community development organization that has constructed affordable housing in the city of Portsmouth for over 22 years and has put more than $9 million back on the real estate tax rolls here in the city of Portsmouth. Tonight, I stand before you to make an appeal for tax abatement for over the last 10 years on several properties. One located at 1420 Chestnut, 2506 Graham Street, 1029 Ann Street, 318 Roberta Street, 2231 Elm Avenue, 1906 LaSalle Avenue, and 2309 Peach Street. On May 29, 2012, CCDI received a letter from the city assessor's office denying its application for real estate tax abatement based on the state and city codes for real estate exemption. Mr. Mayor, city council members, I respectfully disagree with this determination. Previous to receiving the aforementioned letter, I was informed by the city assessor that she had made the final decision to approve, not to approve CCDI's tax exemption applications. This prompted me to review CCDI's IRS 501(c)(3) determination under the IRS 501(c) code of 1954. Under this code, CCDI is deemed a charitable organization which is defined as a generally accepted term meaning relief of the poor, the distressed, or the underprivileged, the advancement of education, erecting and/or maintaining public buildings, monuments, or works, lessening the burdens of government, lessening neighborhood tensions, eliminating prejudice and discrimination, and combating community deterioration and juvenile delinquency. After reviewing this code, I called city assessor Cold Pepper and informed her that CCDI clearly met the state and city codes based on an IRS charitable status. However, my intent was rejected. Tonight, I want to link CCDI's 501(c)(3) charitable status and the state code 58.1-3651, which is known as the General Provisions for Property Tax. The state code reads, "Any county, city, or town may be made by designation or classification exempt from real or personal property taxes or both by ordinance adopted by the local governing body, the real or personal property or both owned by nonprofit organization that uses such property for religious, charitable, patriotic, historical, benevolent, cultural, or public park and playground purposes." This ordinance states, this ordinance shall state that the specific use on which the exemption is based and continuance of the exemption shall be contingent on the continued use of the property in accordance with the purpose for which the organization is classified or designated. In addition, Section B of that state ordinance also reads, "Before adopting any such ordinance, the governing body shall consider the following questions. One, whether the organization is exempt from taxation pursuant to a 501(c) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1954. And two, whether the organization provides services for the common good of the public." Not only is CCDI a charitable organization, it addresses the issues of relief of the poor, the distressed, or the underprivileged, the advancement of education, lessening of burdens of government, lessening neighborhood tensions, eliminating prejudice and discrimination, and combating community deterioration and juvenile delinquency through three services: affordable housing, microenterprises, which is small business lending, and youth programming. Also, as it relates to the state code, CCDI is the lesser on 1420 Chestnut Street, which is Oasis Ministries. This this partnership was birthed as a public-private partnership between Oasis Ministries, the city of Portsmouth, HUD, and the Center for Community Development. It should be noted that Oasis is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, and CCDI leases that land to them. In conclusion, I have provided copies of the IRS 501(c)(3) that CCDI has, which highlights the paragraph deeming us as charitable organization. I also have a copy of the Virginia Tax Code 58.1 that's 3651, highlighting that section, Sections A and B. Also, I am requesting that tax relief for CCDI for those properties for the last 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagwood. Councilman Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. But my question is not, Mr. Hagwood, I was going to ask if we could, you know, he gave a lot of statues and if we could get that information turned over to our legal department and they could get back with us like pretty quick on with the reading on that so that if, because I don't want to be violating any, you know, any laws here. And I'm sure if our assessor denied that, she probably had a sound basis, but she's not a legal person, so we do have a legal department. Ms. Cordell, I know you can't answer that question tonight, but I'd like for you all to get Mr. Hagwood's information and give us an opinion on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, I concur with Councilman Cherry. That was my same concern. So many things he quoted that we need to look at that and make sure that things are where they need to be.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for bringing this to our attention, Mr. Hagwood. I guess my question would be, there's a process involved with when you disagree with the assessor's office on a tax ruling, there's a process involved where you can appeal that, appeal process, if you may. Have you indicated that you're going to go through that to meet with them?
Yes, sir. I was informed that I could appeal to council, so this is my first step in actually that appeal process. Whatever needs to take place after that, after this, CCDI is willing to do.
Yeah, actually, you could have done that before council, but it's good that we're aware of that situation. I'm certainly been a supporter of CCDI and still am, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, sir. Good night.
Following Mr. Cook is Mr. Clyde Toler.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, and council members, my name is Maury Cook, Chairman of the Board for the Center for Community Development. And as you know, CCDI has worked for over 22 years to eliminate prejudice and discrimination in our city, combat community deterioration in housing, as well as injustices against those in our community who get caught in this hideous trap of discrimination. Mr. Mayor and council members, I believe you also recognize the work that CCDI has done with our youth. We've exposed or trained over 1,000 of our young people in the art of playing the steel drum, African drum, even African dance and creative writing. And this group performs all over Hampton Roads, even as far away as Pennsylvania. And let's not forget that we have worked with several hundred teens, 14 to 19 years of age, to deal with anger, anxiety, improve concentration, compassion, and we do retreats in southwest Virginia, Charlottesville, and Oakland, California. And I also believe that you are aware that CCDI has served the underserved with very small business loans and training to help start small businesses, and that CCDI's first loan was in cottage industry for two sewing machines. For a young couple, and they were done with our son's Greg's memorial fund, and since this first loan, a micro lending program has loaned nearly $3 million to our citizens in Hampton Roads. And these loans are loans that banks normally will not do. I'm saying all of this for two reasons. One is to show that we have gone way beyond any generally accepted IRS, city, or state criteria for a charitable organization that qualifies for tax exemption. And two, that discrimination is alive and well in our city in a very subtle and difficult way to see. Six months ago, CCDI was accused of a conflict of interest, and this conflict supposedly stemmed from the purchase of two houses with the use of federal funds by our Chief Operating Officer Bruce Asbury. It sounds pretty rough until you start to see what really happened. No federal funds were ever used, none, for the purchase of either one of these houses. One of these houses was purchased at about 40% below appraised value, and the city, the city's file clearly stated that these transactions were approved by the account manager, her supervisor, and then Deputy City Manager, Dr. Lydia Patton. Further, this accusation came at a critical time in the life of CCDI. It came at a time of extreme financial hardship, caused partly by the most difficult financial downturn in our country, certainly in my lifetime, but mostly caused by mean-spirited actions of two city employees over the past three years, and I will explain further. Not only did someone go back seven years to find this conflict information, they sent this to HUD without any representation, with any research of the approval process and the history behind that approval, and no contact whatsoever with CCDI before going to HUD. Based on the information, misinformation that HUD received, CCDI was charged with a conflict. When the true information came forward to the city, it was never sent back to HUD until CCDI bypassed the city and sent it directly to HUD. HUD quickly reversed their decision and found no conflict. There is a timeline that goes with this story that is quite amazing, and I'll share it with you at some other time. I am telling this story because I know there was still doubt based on a false, mean-spirited picture that was painted. There are at least two dozen other examples of similar tactics designed, in my belief, to discredit CCDI.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Thank you very much. I'm gonna finish this last.
No, sir, you can't.
No?
Your time's up now.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Clyde Toler. And he's followed by Mr. Larry Gump.
Councilman Moody?
Good evening. Clyde Toler.
I'm sorry, Councilman Moody had a question.
All right.
Excuse me, sir.
I yield to you.
I was going to comment, Mayor, I know you chaired this meeting and presided this meeting according to our council rules, and I do know, and I've seen you do it a number of times, and that's to extend time to citizens. Mr. Cook wasn't offering some frivolous information here. He was offering information that this council needs to be aware of. And besides, when you chair the meeting and a citizen requests additional time, there's six other members at this council. You need to turn to us, and it should be up to council, consensus of council, whether time's going to be extended. Mayors in the past have extended that courtesy, and I would like to see you do likewise.
Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Okay.
Mr. Toler? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Clyde Toler, 1029 Blair Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I live in Harborview. Ms. White and staff, I attended the Tower David Council Meeting on Sunday. That consists of the Fleet Reserve Association. This doesn't consist of the Navy, it consists of the Army and the Air Force. You have to be in the Marine Corps, either the Navy or either the Coast Guard. Anyway, Hampton, Virginia, Elizabeth City, North Carolina, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, and Portsmouth, are the Fleet Reserve Association. We greet Ms. White for a great outstanding job she had. This was the greatest parade I've seen since the 50s when I used to march and when I was in the band in Marine Corps Station here. But it was great. And the little scooter she was on didn't play out on her. Must have heard it, you did a good job. And, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm gonna come back at you because you said it was gonna rain, it didn't rain. And on top of that, you ain't got no check. Han Rain ain't the way gonna charge us later on telling us that Bruce Smith won $50,000, $6,000. I hope not. Don't keep us in the dark.
Okay, sir.
All right. Going on from there, I would like to bring up, on the Sunday just before Memorial Day, I attended fellowship United Church of Christ down in Chesapeake, Virginia, which you was there once. Two young ladies, 90-plus, Mrs. Rupert Bush and Mrs. Helen Pope. They wouldn't smile. You know, I told you, I don't mess around with the old people because I'm old. But they wouldn't smile, but when I went up there whispering here, they smiled for the camera, they got a nice picture taken. So anyway, sitting on this council, all of you should look around you because it's brightened up today. Look at their city attorney. Hey, this puts some class up there, looking good, eh? Don't think we ain't looking.
He looks better, doesn't he?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hey, you got to give credit where beauty is. But like I told you, I don't play around with the old people because I'm old. I don't hang out with them. But anyway, back to the school. I will say this, and I sit on the porch in the afternoon sometime early in the morning, I see the kids going to school. I fought the parents, all of the men that mess with the kids at these schools, I fought the parent. I see these little hooch-a-coocha, their lips red as an apple, dresses all the way up to the rim, and dressed like they going to a bar or something. This is what's causing all this trouble in the school. And many of them go to school, they get to school, when they had their little clothes in a backpack, they leave home decent, but when they get to school, they change up. The principal of these schools should be fired if she doesn't get the teachers and things, report these things. I came before you three months ago, before all this started happening. I told you, you need to see the police chief. Put somebody young in the school, and you will find out about this sex mess, touching in places you shouldn't be doing and all, and look what's gonna happen now. The school board is not doing a good job of what they doing. Yeah, I say it, because I tell you why. When you sit up there and let this go on in the school and it continues to happen, somebody is failing. But the parents, I fought you. Make your kids pull their pants up, make your little girl load their dresses. When I went to school, they were low. We didn't see everything, want Christmas, they didn't show Christmas, and they want Christmas. But now it is. But when I went to school, you had the one. Said, "Look at there," but you wasn't. But nowadays, you ain't got the one that you can see. Yeah, I said, parents, pull your little daughter's dresses down, and men and mothers tell your son to keep your hands off some other little young girl where they shouldn't be. And when a teacher reports something, if the principal don't do anything about it, if you find out, I think the best thing is to the hotline, put a box in the school, let kids write you, eh, no, put in there what's going on. They can't come out and tell you because kids will call them a snitch, and you know you ain't going to find out everything that way. But something has got to be done. I heard you say 500, 900-some graduated, but you didn't say how many didn't get their diploma. I know 40 in Norcom didn't. They fail. S.O.L. You see, you got to tell the truth and put it where the truth goes. You got to. You got to do that. But people's come up here and blow smoke, and that's not good. But I can't do anything about what the kids do. But I sit on my porch and I tell some of these hooligans, when they come by slowing down in the car, looking at their little girl, hey, you better move on, because that kid ain't but 13 or 14-years-old, and you will be in jail. And they take off. But to see these little hoochah-choochah need to stop this. And this city, school board, how come these parents don't show up at the school board meeting? Look at their meeting. Hey, it's nobody there. These parents, you're responsible for your kid, and don't send your kid to school and think the teacher's supposed to raise that kid. Mr. Moody, you got a great idea. You should get a lot of backing. Hotline is good. But you know if a kid says something, they gonna say, "Hey, you're a snitch," and they'll come down on them. So what you gotta do, maybe get the police to tighten up, and when you find these people, put them over in jail. But I never see none of the young teachers, women, must be some of the ugly boys in school, because you'll never see none of the teachers going in, none of the boys. There's always the men at the little hoochah-choochah. But this needs to stop. And I think it'd be a nice idea if this council get together and get that superintendent that he's sitting here, Granny, get him in here and make him start doing something. If he can't, if you don't have no authority over him, let the city Commonwealth take it over, and let's do something about this. And let's stop all this mess being on the headlines of the paper, all this sex mess. But get somebody in the school, Mayor, you the mayor, making you look bad too. Make me look bad, make all of us look bad. But we need to start doing something about it. And Alabama and Mississippi, how come some cities in that state has got a law, you can't wear your pants there showing your underwear? How come you don't get together, this council don't get together and pass that enforcement? It don't have to be the state. You can do it right here in the city. So do it. And let's do something with that church from bridge. Let's get some of that money, and let's start doing something, getting some of these things did around here, and clean this school system up. Parents, come out and get rid of your superintendent, your chairman, whoever, get rid of them, and get some people in there and do the job. Thank you.
Good night, Sergeant Major.
Mr. Larry Gump is followed by Mr. Steve Carroll.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Larry Gump. Lived at 2900 block of Radcliffe Lane. I'm living in Chesapeake right now, getting ready to move back to Portsmouth. Been gone for about a year. And out of the 33 years of age that I have on me, I've spent two of those in Chesapeake. I actually had something written down that I wanted to read tonight, but it's kind of, things have changed as the meeting's gone on tonight, so I think I'm gonna modify it a little bit. One question I had, or one just thing I wanted to bring up, was about the leisure master plan. And that was, for those of you who are familiar with Bruce Road and Western Branch, they have what used to be an old railroad track that runs all down Bruce Road. It's used really heavily for jogging, folks go out and walk their dog, see a lot of families out there doing that. They're pulling up the railroad tracks I see in Churchland that are going behind, go through like Siesta Gardens, and then comes back behind Farm Fresh, but it's going behind those neighborhoods. And I was wondering if there's anything that we can do about that, as far as maybe securing that for citizens to use as a jogging path, if that could be incorporated into the master plan at all. It was just an idea. Like I said, it gets a lot of use in Chesapeake. It's only about a mile and a half of formerly what was railroad tracks. So I thought that would be worth bringing up and mentioning tonight, since the master plan for the leisure services was being considered. The other thing was, I had an opportunity last night to watch the, online, to watch the work session that occurred yesterday. And then I was able to watch the work session, obviously I was here tonight, and then for the meeting. And it really disturbed, well, there's two things. One, it just really disturbs me that council should be setting the example for everybody else in the city. We're talking a lot about divisiveness, but people coming together, and I've talked about people coming together before. It seems like, and I'm not gonna lay any blame here because it's not my place to do it, but people are getting cut off left and right. People aren't able to finish sentences when you guys are trying to have discussions. And as a citizen, you know, I try to have my kids, who are old enough, I have a 14-year-old daughter who I try to have involved in civics, and she sits down, she watches this stuff, and she asks me questions. I go, "Why are they fighting? Or why can't they get along? Why is person A cutting off person B? Why is person B angry?" And I'm trying to explain to them. And just, I don't want to create any more divisiveness with the issue, but something's gotta change. Everybody's gotta be able to talk, and there's gotta be a, somehow you guys have gotta work it out so that everybody has enough time to talk and be heard. No disrespect to you, Mayor, but, you know, Mr. Whitehurst was trying to talk at the work session last night, and it really sounded like he cut them off. And like I said, I don't mean to be disrespectful about it. I think Mr. Moody's angry about it today. I picked up that he's, seems like he's a little bit angry that it happened. I was a little bit angry that it happened. I wanted to hear what he had to say. He had some very good points about the property that's located in Craddock High School. And, you know, if we're not all stopping and taking a minute to think about what we're doing, nothing's getting accomplished. All we're doing is fighting and banging heads, and we don't need that. City has got a long way to go, but we've gone a long way already. And the city council is a big reason for that. And I think you guys are doing a fantastic job, but we've gotta, we've gotta find a way to stop the bickering and have discussion without any one person trying to run the roost, if I can put it any, I'm allowed to put it any softer way. I guess that's really pretty much all I had to say about that. Like I said, I written something up, but that was kind of the crux of my comments, so.
Okay. Good job, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Mr. Steve Carroll is followed by Ms. Pat Simons.
My name's Steve Carroll. I reside at 3112 River Ridge Drive. Tonight, I'd like to talk about what appears to have resurfaced is the future of the jail on the waterfront. I'm sure you've already seen this information, but it's been relayed to me, and I have some certified documents here that show that the per diem cost to move our inmates to the regional jail will go up from roughly $4 million a year in 2013 to $15 million in 2017. That's a huge increase. That's a four-fold increase in just five years. There are arguments that I've heard certain members of council say that it's cost-effective. I haven't seen any proof of that. What we have here is information that is on the record, provided by the regional jail, it's their own worksheet and their own figures that prove otherwise. I think it's time that those on city council that are proposing to move the jail showed their cards, put the facts on the table. 80% of the jail population are state inmates, and we do get compensation from the state for that. But it appears that the motive for the regional jail to scream about moving our inmates in over that place is they've lost their sugar daddy. Immigration, Customs Enforcement was paying them $88 per diem for their inmates, and they pulled them out and taken them to Farmville. That sounds like a conflict of interest to me. I'd like to see more facts. Let's take this aside. I brought this information to council before, and you have it before you. It costs money to build new buildings, and we've done a terrible job in this city of taking care of what we have. And I've seen it happen time and time again. Churchland High School was deliberately allowed to deteriorate as an excuse to have it condemned and rebuilt somewhere else, simply so we could put something else on the property. The same thing was done with the courthouse. It was not properly maintained. If we had put $1 million a year into that courthouse, we would've spent $40 million. We're now gonna spend close to $80 million, and from what I hear, probably a whole lot more than that, building the new courts complex. It pays to take care of what you have. I do. Now, let's just look at some rough figures here. Let's suppose that we have a $75 million liability to build a new jail, and that's principal and interest. It takes roughly four times that amount in investment to get a reasonable rate of return. For example, at $1.27 per hundred, a $400 million investment is gonna net a 15-year payback. Well, would somebody on council show me where we have somebody standing in line waiting to spend $400 million on that waterfront? I'd like to see it. Even $200 million will take a 30-year investment. So where's the money? Show us, as the taxpayers who are gonna have to eat this increase to move the regional jail, where the money is at. I'd like to see it. We deserve it. We're currently paying debt service on a Renaissance Hotel. We're gonna be paying forever for the new courts complex. We can't afford this. You've got the land down there to do it one day, and that was anticipated, but now is not the time. You need to take care of that jail, you need to keep it. You're gonna have to transport people from the regional jail anyway to the new courts complex. So what have you gained by moving the inmates there? If you're gonna insist that it's cost-effective, those who propose it, play the cards and show everybody, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Ms. Pat Simons is followed by Ms. Katina Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Pat Simons, and I'm on Mimosa Road. I had a couple, just a couple quick comments to make this evening. One thing I wanted to address was the parks, the master plan for the parks in Rec. And I wondered how many of you have read that 102-page document? No hands? I'm sure none of you have read through that whole thing. But you've had a couple of presentations, the same presentation, at least a couple of times on it. Now, I applaud you, Mr. Whitehurst, for voting against that thing. And Ms. Randall, you did an excellent job of saying what I was thinking. If that is put into place, it takes away any leeway to do anything. You have a master plan, and then you're gonna be forced to fund it and come up with money to do exactly what it says. It's a sign of too much government. That's what it boils down to. You know, when you look at this city and you look at all the individual pocket parks that people have, you can forget about them in the future. If you put in that master plan, there goes everything, any individual, anything that makes this city individual and different from everybody else. You're gonna have it right down to a T. Here's what it is, and that's all we can do. I can hear it now. It's typical of government regulation. Oh, no, we can't do that, it's not in the plan. You know? So I just caution you about adopting that thing. I know a lot of effort and a lot of money has gone into it, but I've never heard you guys discuss it among yourselves in a workshop. You know, I've been privy to the presentations that you've heard, but I've never heard, I would like to see one of you question, you know, if there are 95,000 people in this city, why did only 300 respond to the surveys? You know, I mean, you guys don't discuss things. And I think part of it is, I see you, Mayor, going off in your own direction. Like in the workshop this evening, you talked about going to Churchland High School, and you went into the different classrooms, and you felt the different temperatures, and you talked about the air quality problems there, and the colored strips hanging from the vents. Since when did you become an HVAC specialist? You know, doesn't the city have one somewhere that you can send somebody professional in there that knows about this stuff? I mean, you might be into, you might, you have an engineering firm, but I don't think you're in HVAC. I mean, I'm sorry. You know? And then you made the comment, you're gonna follow up with Chairman Bridgeford and decide what to do. Excuse me, how can you two get together and decide what to do? I mean, this is a governing body, it's not a one government person. And Richard Hartman gave the whole explanation, and it all boils down to the fact that the contractor needs to go in there. He's the one that was made to control those individual heat pump units. The school never got the control from him. So has anybody here talked with the school and told them this, that they need to get with the contractor? No. Where is the cooperation? You know, I see you don't cooperate apparently with the school board, only if it's one individual here and there. That's like when the 9.9 million came back from the school, we had to reappropriate that money right away. And it was, it had to get on the agenda, it had to be done right away. And the only comment I heard was from you, Mr. Mayor, it had to be done that day because the school board had contracts that they had to let. However, it came back from the money that was for future Clark expansion. But yet you stated they had to have it right away because it was, they had contracts. But that's not where it came from, so how did it have to go back to that? You know, there's a lot of, when you get into doing this and that, and throwing things around, and sticking them against the wall, you gotta have all the details in place before you do that. I'm sure there were a couple other comments that I wanted to make, but I'm just about done with those. The only other one thing I would like to say is, you, I've never heard HR come back to you with information on that auditor that you need to hire. It's more important than ever that you get that person in place and have him full-time, Mr. Moody, because we, this city needs an auditor full-time, not part-time. There's no room for part-time. A question came up in the workshop again this evening about, how much money does the school really have? How much more do they have? Well, if we had an auditor in position, they could find that out for us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, Counselor Moody?
Ms. Simon, thanks for being here. You don't have to come back. You made a comment, you were at our public work session about our discussion of Churchland High School and the HVAC problem, which according to the school system is a $16 million problem on a school that cost $20 million in 1992. So go figure. When the mayor said that, you know, he would get with the chairman of the school board and see what's going on, work it out, whatever they were gonna do, if you recall, I said the city council needs to hear that presentation. You know, we're a city council, we're not a council of one. The mayor chairs the meeting. And Dr. Holly, Jim Holly, knew that. He had excellent people skills, didn't dominate, didn't dominate a meeting and let other people talk. And that's something that hopefully will be learned, but we make decisions as a council. We don't have one of us go commit the city to anything. So thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Ms. Barnes?
And Ms. Barnes is followed by Ms. Tawana Okafor.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, and council members, good evening. My name is Katina Barnes. I am a member and leader of St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church located at 2714 Frederick Boulevard in Portsmouth. It is with a great pleasure that I greet you all this evening. In effort to partner and collaborate, St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church has joined forces with Virginia Breast Cancer Foundation in establishing a signature event in the city of Portsmouth. This signature event is in that of a breast cancer victory walk. We have proposed a date of September 15, 2012. We ask that you fully support this initiative to implement a breast cancer victory walk. Among the breast cancer signature events in Hampton Roads, Virginia Beach has Coleman Race for the Cure. Norfolk has Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. Portsmouth, can you see it? Portsmouth Breast Cancer Victory Walk. Not only will this initiative bring awareness to breast Not only will this initiative bring awareness to breast cancer, but it will reestablish Portsmouth as one of the area's most livable cities. Because this city is going through a remarkable positive change, the members of St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church and Virginia Breast Cancer Foundation feel a breast cancer victory walk will bring about empowerment, ownership, vision, and drive for the citizens of Portsmouth. Your citizens, Portsmouth citizens, are dying each day from breast cancer. Out of the health, out of the 35 health districts, Portsmouth is known for having the highest mortality rate of breast cancer. Please support our initiative. Help us educate, advocate, and eradicate. We can do this as a city by capitalizing on its unique assets. Portsmouth has a variety of leaders and powerhouse partners that will make this breast cancer victory walk an event that will arouse revenue and loyalty to the city. Breast cancer is more than a pink ribbon. Please support the initiative for the breast cancer victory walk. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Let me ask you, where is this victory walk gonna occur?
We would like it to begin right at the waterfront. It would begin at the Antelo's Pavilion and go down the waterfront. It would be about two miles.
Okay. What time?
What time? We set nine to 11.
Nine to 11, okay. Thank you. Thanks for what you did. Uh, Dr. Edmonds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I happen to know Ms. Barnes and the very fine pastor at the church where she comes from. I do think that, in keeping with some, some things that we do need to be concerned with, that is that dastardly diseased council. And I think at one moment, we did have a walk that was in conjunction with Eumogia, and somehow it got canceled. And I would like personally to see if Mr. Brandon Godfrey, I think he could help us route out that. I think it'd cause some more festive things to come to Portsmouth, like we did the Eumogia Festival and OpSeal. I think it will bring some awareness also to the citizens of Portsmouth about council is not just a pink ribbon. I think that's something that our city can highlight. And we have a beautiful waterfront that can be done in that walk. And I just hope we, my colleagues, would look at that as something that can be attainable. Thank you.
You say it used to be held in conjunction with Eumogia?
Yes. Because I walked it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Very good job. Thank you, Dr. Edmonds.
Our final speaker is Ms. Tawana Okafor.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen. I am Tawana Okafor, who resides in Chesapeake, Virginia. Previously, I resided and worked in this wonderful city. I am a twelve-year breast cancer survivor. Presently, I am on the Board of Directors for Virginia Breast Cancer Foundation, and I am the local president of the Hampton Roads chapter of Virginia Breast Cancer Foundation. Did you know that one in nine women will encounter breast cancer in their lifetime? The breast cancer statistics rank high in the United States. In Portsmouth, Virginia, it is the third highest in the country. According to state health statistics, Portsmouth has the highest breast cancer mortality rate in Virginia. Breast cancer deaths count for about 35 in every 100,000 women in Portsmouth. White women are more likely to be diagnosed with this disease, but black women are more likely to die. The mortality rate for black women is about 47% higher, according to the American Cancer Society. Now, we ask the question, why? There are disparities in education, work, income, health insurance, and housing. Which one do you think affects us the most? It is unknown as to which one has the most effect. But I am called to action to educate others and advocate for those with a silent voice. So I speak for those who are silent and unable to take on the dynamics of this disease. I talked about women, but breast cancer is not just a woman's only disease. Men are affected by this dreadful disease. This year, we will celebrate the sixth annual victory walk here in Portsmouth along the magnificent waterfront. This will be on Saturday, September 5, 2012. It is a lovely two-mile walk. St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church has partnered with us to make this a spectacular event as we educate others about breast health awareness. We are asking the city of Portsmouth to get on board and partner with us again to educate the citizens here and reduce the mortalities from breast cancer. Let it be known that the city of Portsmouth is actively involved in reducing the disparities of breast cancer through education and advocacy. Let us partner and educate so men and women are diagnosed at an earlier stage if they have breast cancer. Remind your family and friends to check their breasts and have a doctor check out anything that is not normal. So I'm calling on you to action. Check your breasts, get a mammogram, advocate for breast health, and educate others. Thank you for your time and your willingness to eradicate breast cancer. Hopefully, our partnership will continue until breast cancer statistics change here or the eradication of breast cancer.
Thank you very much. Let me ask you, you mentioned September 5. Is this the same event?
September 15, yes.
The 15th, so it is the same walk?
Correct.
Okay, September 15. All right, are you familiar with Frieda Bryant?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're familiar with the scholarship or the actual dollars that Walmart donated and the great work that we're doing here in the city of Portsmouth?
$300,000.
Are you working in conjunction with her?
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Well done. Mr. Whitehurst?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know what to ask us to do, but I'm concerned with the CCDI thing and Mara Cook not being given the full time to talk. I think the body ought to have someone, the city manager, the city attorney, to sit with him and find out what he has to say and come up with some solution.
Okay. Dr. Edmonds? You okay? All right? Actually, Mr. Whitehurst, that's an excellent idea. And if he wanted to forward that over to the city manager and have them look at that. And I think the other matter with the tax abatement, and I thought Mr. Oaksman actually looked in that and gave us some opinion as to how to proceed with that, I believe. But we can take all that and look into that. And so that point well taken, sir. Okay, anybody else with anything? And Mr. Cook, if you would see Mr. Godfrey here after the meeting and hand him or get with him with anything you have there, and then hopefully we can take up the remainder of what you did have. Anybody else for the good of the meet? All right, thank you very much. We adjourn.